They are organizational meeting.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first, um, order of business, the organizational meeting question of a mayor for a two-year term expiring on June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion, is there a motion nominating a member for the position of mayor?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to nominate Bobby Henderson for mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussions? Hearing nothing, um, all, all, please say aye if you want to vote aye.
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 Any nays? Hearing no nays, the motion passes and Mr. Henderson is mayor for the next two years. So, Mr. Henderson, I'll turn it over to you for further matters under the organizational meeting and setting a election of a vice mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Michelson. Item number three on the organizational meeting will be to nominate and place a or elect a vice mayor for the city of Waynesboro for a two-year term expiring June 30th, 2022. Do we have any nominations for the position of vice mayor?
I'll nominate Lana Williams.
Do we have a second? I'll second that. And do we have another nomination for the position of vice mayor? Hearing no other no.
I was just gonna say, Mr. Henderson, once there's a motion and a second, you must move on that motion.
Oh, we, okay. All right, so I've got a, uh, a nomination for Lana Williams. Motion made by Bruce, seconded by me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
So, hearing three ayes and two nays. Ms. Williams, you're now the vice mayor of Waynesboro. All right, item number four, uh, for us to consider is to reappoint our charter members. Unless there's objections, we'll do this by a single motion and vote. Uh, there's a motion, uh, is there a motion on the floor to appoint our current officers, which are the city manager, Mike Hamp, the city assessor, Mary Garrus, the city clerk Judy, Julia Bordel, and city attorney Melissa Mickelson, Litten in sight.
I'll make that motion.
Terry, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Sam, second of the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposed, the slate will stand, five oh. Uh, item number five is to consider appointing or reappointing Mike Hamp as acting clerk of council to serve in the absence of our city clerk, uh, our council clerk. Is there a motion to reappoint Mike as acting clerk?
I'll make that motion.
Sam? There a second?
I'll second.
Bruce, thank you both. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Uh, aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposed, it's a five oh vote. And that is our, oh, no, no, we've got a, uh, item number six. We have to, uh, appoint, uh, our board members and currently we have a position open on the CAPSOL board, a, the planning commission, Parks and recommend, uh, Parks and Recreation Board. I recommend the following, Ms. Williams for CAPSOL, me for Planning Commission, and Ms., uh, Dr. Hostetter for Parks and Recs. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Uh, Valley Program for Aging is listed there. Is that not one that we have to point tonight?
Mr. Hamp?
So, Dr. Hostetter and, uh, Mayor Henderson, that particular appointment requires some additional research on the part of staff. Um, it was unclear whether we were appointing to, um, the B-Pass Board or the Senior Center Advisory Group. So, um, we need, we'll bring that back to the council as appropriate in the future.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so we have a first and second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? That motion carries five oh. Uh, that concludes our organizational meeting for tonight, and we're gonna move right into our regularly scheduled business meeting. So, uh, sub, 7:07 PM, we called to order the, uh, regular business meeting for July 13th, 2020, meeting of the city council. I've got a little disclaimer I have to read because we're doing this virtual. Uh, citizens may participate in the citizen comment period by calling at the appropriate time. The call-in number is 844-844-9200. When prompted, enter the access code for the meeting, which is 398145, followed by the pound sign. You will hear a Q and A session has started. At that time, you'll press the star and number six. You will hear, if you would like to speak, press one to be added to the queue. Uh, then you press one. While you are in queue, you will hear the audio feed, uh, for the meeting until you are prompted by the moderator, then you can share your comments with council. Participant, participants are recommended that, uh, throughout the proceedings, uh, to wait to be prompted for questions. Uh, the public hearing is a citizen comment portion of the meeting, and are already time for the, uh, council to simply hear your comments. You will not get a reply back from council tonight. Uh, item number two on our docket is, uh, adoption of the meeting agenda. Uh, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Are there any discussions on the, uh, agenda as present, presented? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? What was that? Okay. Hearing no opposed, it'll be a five oh vote, this motion carries. Item number three is our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No opposed, it carries five oh, thank you all. All right, item number four is members, uh, for council. Council have anything they would like to share? Sam, you're nodding your head, go ahead.
Uh, I do, I didn't know if anyone else had. Um, it's been brought both my attention from constituents and also from my monitoring of the, uh, Virginia Department of Health site that Waynesboro's COVID cases have had a significant rise in the last week. Um, and, uh, there are probably several things that have contributed to that. One being that there was another, uh, episode of mass testing last week, and there were numerous, uh, positives that came out of that event that were Waynesboro residents. Um, uh, anecdotally, I have heard of some spread through some parties and things like that. These were, as I understand, private parties, not, uh, out and about. But it serves as a reminder, and I think we're seeing this all over the country, that this virus will come back as soon as it's given the chance. So, you know, I think it's an acknowledgement of what the situation is. You know, we still have relatively few cases, but they are increasing, so people continue to need to be wise. Um, wear the masks, wash your hands, do the right thing. I mean, that information is out there for everybody to know. So, let's all keep pulling together and hopefully keep things under control here in Waynesboro.
Thank you, Sam. Any other matters? Nope. All right, so let's move on to item number five, which is a presentation by Luke Jiday, Director of Planning, uh, for four projects, uh, to be submitted by the city of, uh, for funding under the VDOT Smart Scale Program, and consider adopting resolutions for support for each application. Mr. Jiday?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Oops, that's the wrong presentation. Give me just a second. Had the wrong presentation up. There we go. I am, uh, gonna share my screen here if I'm able to. There we go. You all see that?
Yes.
Great. Uh, so before you today, I'm, uh, asking for resolutions of support for our Smart Scale applications for 2020. And I'll just review a little bit of what the Smart Scale program is, uh, and then talk about the projects that we're proposing for this round. So, Smart Scale is a program of the Virginia Department of Transportation that governs disbursement of state grant funds for new transportation infrastructure. This is essentially all the money that the state collects through gas tax or through income tax that gets devoted to transportation purposes. There is money that's devoted to new construction, and that's the Smart Scale program. And then there's also money that's devoted to maintenance, for instance, the urban maintenance program that we get, uh, money for for paving. It's also known as HB2, House Bill 2. And this program is, uh, held every two years. So, we're in Smart Scale Round Four, the first one being in, in 2014. If any of you have been around local government, many of you have been around local government a long time, this is a successor to the old six-year improvement plan system. Um, the idea behind Smart Scale is that it would be less political and a more objective approach to spending state money, um, and that regions and localities would submit their projects, and the projects with the highest cost benefit score would be funded. Obviously, there's still plenty of, uh, politics and that goes on in terms of determining what the scores are and how things are measured. Um, and we participate in some of those meetings that the state has and try to advocate for, um, you know, rubrics that are favorable to our locality. Um, but they try to come up with a roughly objective system to gauge what's really worth spending state money on. Um, that money split into a district, district grant and a statewide high priority pot. Um, basically, that's the, to ensure some geographic parity, to ensure that, um, every part of the Commonwealth gets a certain amount of money. And so, we're generally competing for district grant money. Our projects unfortunately are usually not very competitive for statewide high priority, uh, money, largely because, um, we just don't have the kind of traffic and the kind of volumes to really generate the, the cost benefit scores that, you know, places in Northern Virginia or Hampton Roads do. Um, localities of Waynesboro size can submit up to four applications each cycle, is the current rule. Um, and MPO and Bright can also submit applications. It doesn't mean that you wanna max out and go all out, you know. Uh, generally, uh, VDOT and, and those folks can tell you what's gonna be a good application. You need to have a project that has enough engineering behind it, enough planning, that it's, it's got enough information that's worth pursuing. Um, and it needs to be something that's gonna score well enough. And, uh, VDOT's worked out a great system of pre-applications where they can give you good feedback and screen your ideas. Projects are scored on six metrics, only five for us. We don't use the land use metric. Uh, that's safety, congestion mitigation, accessibility, economic development, and environmental quality. We usually make a lot of our hay in our applications off of safety and accessibility. Um, safety is a major concern on many of our roads, um, accidents, uh, and then pedestrian accessibility. Many of our roads are fairly hospital to, um, other modes besides driving. We don't get much score usually for congestion mitigation. Um, I'm sure that many of our residents will disagree, but in the eyes of the state, we don't have any traffic, you know, other than maybe a little bit on Rossar Avenue. Um, we have great big wide roads and not very many people on them generally. So, uh, we're normally scoring a lot of points on safety and accessibility, and, and our metrics for our region are set up to favor those. In the last three rounds of Smart Scale, we received funding for three projects in total. Uh, we received one project in the first round and two projects in the third round. In the first round, we received the funding for the Southern Connector, the Shenandoah Village Drive Extension. Many of you know that project is well behind schedule. Um, it's still ongoing though, still moving forward. They had issues with, uh, wetlands permits from the Army Corps of Engineers crossing a rail, a privately owned, uh, railroad track, um, uh, which is always a, a massive problem. Uh, but that project is still on track, uh, estimated for completion in 2022 to 2023. Uh, and that'll be a big project for us. It'll give you an alternative to getting on I-60 Ford to get from, um, all the way from over near Target to Delphine Avenue and other east-west corridor for us. Uh, another project that we received in, uh, round three, which was in 2018, was the East Main Streetscape and Multi-Use Path, uh, which will reconfigure each main street, add street trees, take off the bike lanes, um, add a, uh, one side of parallel parking back to East Main Street, and then provide a separated shared use path for bikers and walkers to get safely all the way out to the eastern edge of the city, where hopefully we'll eventually connect to the Croce Tunnel Trail. And then also the 13th and Rossar Roundabout, uh, was approved in that as, as well. And both of those projects are slated for construction around 2024. So, that's where we're at. Here's the applications that we are proposing and asking for resolutions of support on today. And there, we believe the applications that we have the, the best information for that are likely to score the best and be the most beneficial to the city based on our plan. The first application is for the Rossar Avenue Corridor Improvements. It's about $800,000. This is based on a 2018 corridor study that was conducted by Kim Lee Horn, um, under the supervision of the PDC, VDOT, and the city. And Augusta County participated as well because there's one of the stoplights in Augusta County. Um, the MPO may end up submitting this application for us. We're still working out exactly how this strategy is gonna go. And I'll explain a little bit about that in a minute. Um, many of you should be familiar with this project. If you're not, it's, it's a very, it was an interesting one. The idea was a very low-cost intervention, I know, yeah, $1,000. Sounds like a lot of money, but it's really not a lot of money when you're talking about road construction. Uh, it's a very low-cost intervention to significantly increase, um, or decrease travel times through this corridor. Um, and it does that by upgrading and synchronizing all the signals. Now, right after the study was done, there was an initial signal timing adjustment that was done. But that was just basically, you know, somebody standing there setting their watch and saying, okay, now click it to this. Um, those signals are, you know, several decades old, and so they're not connected to each other by any kind of internet or any kind of communications technology. So, the signal timing study was a one-time thing that we have to continually adjust as technology gets slightly out, out of whack. Um, and it just gave us one set of tables of, of what those signal times should be. So, uh, hopefully you did see some improvement with that after the study was completed in October of 2018. And, and I think, um, our traffic is flowing a little bit more smoothly through those signals because of that timing adjustment. But this proposal would get us money to actually upgrade the signals to modern equipment, um, that could communicate through fiber optics, uh, and it can stay synchronized in real time and, and respond, uh, more rapidly to changes in traffic conditions out there. Uh, and that helps to significantly increase the throughput on a road like that without having to widen or do any expensive construction. It would also add more pedestrian accommodations at some of the signals, um, and the, it's a proposal to remove one unnecessary signal at Lennox Drive. It also proposes reconfiguring a number of intersections, um, restricting turns or, uh, restriping, uh, lanes to, uh, rebalance the number of turn lanes and through lanes. Um, and all of these together are predict, projected to decrease travel time by, um, I believe, over a minute or two on the Rossar Avenue Corridor through all nine of these signals. The second application that we're proposing today is for the West Main Stars Study. Uh, you received a presentation about this at the last council meeting. Uh, this has been a very exciting project to work on. We had a steering committee with the city, the county, the PDC, the MPO again, and, um, VDOT, uh, and hired a consultant, um, ATCS LLC, who, uh, did a, a really serious corridor study, um, trying to address the problem of safety. And, and the main driver there, the main place that we're scoring really highly for this project is on safety. As I mentioned, we've had, um, you know, over 300 serious injury accidents out there in the last few years. Uh, and so, based on, um, that study, we have put together a proposal for funding for the main recommendation, which is to rebuild the entire corridor from Holtman Parkway, um, out to Old White Bridge Road in the county. And the county will actually later be asking for, um, us to endorse their, um, proposal for their portion of it as well. Uh, and it would convert the center-left turn lane to a, a planted median. Uh, and you'd be able to do U-turns in certain points to get back to other businesses. Uh, but this would significantly decrease, um, the rate of crashes. They do studies and they, there's something called a crash modification factor that tells you about how many crashes there will be after you do a certain intervention. And it tells us that we'll probably see a decrease of about 60% uh, in serious crashes out there. Uh, it was funded by the Stars Program, which is a VDOT program to do studies that lead to good Smart Scale applications. They wanted to try to, um, help set localities up for success in terms of identifying real needs, um, getting them good proposals, good cost estimates, and good studies. Uh, and so, uh, we benefited from that project, from that program. So, that's the third, um, project. Uh, this kind of shows you one little section of what mine looked like, places where, uh, medians might be installed with some trees here and there. Would also add sidewalk, a continuous sidewalk along one side of the road. So, it would improve, we're scoring really highly on the accessibility metric there. The third project is the Broad Street Access Management Project. Uh, we applied for this two years ago, actually, um, but the, uh, the ticket price was significantly higher then. Uh, so we've, uh, brought it back and we've significantly cut down the project, uh, because it was too high to score well enough on the cost benefit, uh, ratio. Uh, we reduced the cost by trying to avoid a lot of right-of-way utility issues by simplifying the project, uh, and also by moving to just continuous sidewalk on one side. We already have sidewalk along most of the corridor on one side, and so we're gonna improve, um, and replace sections of that sidewalk and ensure that that's fully usable. Um, and we're gonna leave the other side for now. And that, that shaves a ton of money off of the project, um, price. But it involves some beautification, again, plant, replacing a lot of the center-left turn lanes with planted medians. Um, we're scoring really well on safety and pedestrian accessibility. Um, and this is a project that has been emphasized in, in every city transportation plan since 2001, going back all the way to the Whitsall Downtown Plan, um, as something that was important to downtown, um, and also to the northern, uh, half of the city of Waynesboro, which is really cut off from downtown and from the southern half, uh, for pedestrian purposes by Broad Street, which is very hostile pedestrians. Kind of that 60-foot wide pavement, curb-to-curb is, is the worst situation for a pedestrian trying to cross a road. You know, you wanna minimize as much as possible the distance that they need to cross. So, providing medians will, will go a long way towards improving, um, safety there. And obviously, the, the green wave, um, underneath the bridge helped with that a lot as well. The fourth application, uh, is the Croce Tunnel Trail, which you all have heard about before. Um, this has significant planning and engineering work behind it. As you all know, we've submitted it for build grants and, and been unsuccessful there. It's an extreme, it's still mainly held back by just its price tag. It's, it's incredibly expensive because of the live railroad track that crosses the path. Um, and thus far, the insistence of the railroads that they'll only entertain us tunneling underneath the railroad track, which, as you can imagine, is very expensive. Uh, the, the project, we think, is extremely important. It would be transformative for the city in terms of its, its vision of having this outdoor recreation, um, hub. Uh, and it would provide us with this direct access up to the Blue Ridge. We talked about connecting to, we need to build that connection up to the Appalachian Trail and Blue Ridge Parkway. We, we think it's a, an amazing project. At the same time, um, for Smart Scale, we're not that sure that it's a, a great project that's gonna score that well. It's a little bit of a, um, a fishing expedition here potentially, but, uh, we had three pro, three good projects, we felt like. Um, and we had a fourth slot, and this is what we have a lot of engineering and prep for. Um, it does qualify for Smart Scale, um, and VDOT contacted us and said, why don't you try putting the Croce Tunnel in, um, and see how it scores? Um, uh, partially because there was a, a thought that there might be a large influx of money into the district grant pot this year, um, and so it might be a good year for it. So, that's what we're, why we're putting that in. But I wanna temper some expectations about whether we'll get, um, funding for that. Um, as far as strategic considerations, we're in communication with our, our district VDOT folks, um, who are also represented on this call at the moment, as we imagine. And, uh, we are discussing having the MPO put in the Rossar Avenue Corridor project for us. Um, and this is partly because, um, it is likely to qualify, uh, it's, it's the first project we've had in a while that's probably gonna score, almost certainly gonna score well enough to get statewide high priority money. And so, by having them apply for it, we can free up more district grant money for the whole, um, for the whole district, um, and hopefully fund some of our other district grant projects. Any questions about the Smart Scale process or the applications that we're bringing to you today?
Uh, Luke, I actually have a question. Dr. Hostetter, um, you, you mentioned the pedestrian access specifically with, uh, the Broad Street. Um, my recollection is there was pedestrian access in the West Main, uh, plan as well. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. So, that, West Main will actually add a lot of new sidewalks. It'll add sidewalk along one side of that whole corridor. Um, right now, you can go out there and see all the desire paths where pedestrians are currently walking on the grass and cutting over between parking lots and the road. Uh, and so, it'll add at least one continuous, uh, length of sidewalk for them to use. And we'll also add crossings and, and safe, uh, crossing area and safer bus stops as well.
Okay. I was thinking so. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Jiday? Hearing none. Thank you, Luke. Very good presentation. After hearing the presentation, do we have any, uh, motions of support to adopt these resolutions?
I can make that motion.
Thank you, Sam. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bruce. Do we have any other discussion on the motions as they're presented?
Mr. Mayor, I would just state that, uh, as a, as an employee of the Virginia Department of Transportation, I'll be abstaining.
Thank you, Terry. Terry's abstaining. All right, so it's time to vote. Um, all in favor of this resolution or these resolutions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
One abstained. We have, we have a four oh vote with one abstained. Thank you all. Um, our next order of business, oh, have I announced the vote? Our next order of business is to, uh, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city to participate in the, uh, Virginia Water and Wastewater Agency Response Mutual Aid, uh, and execution of the participating agreement. That's a mouthful, and I'm gonna let Mr. Hamp handle that one, or Mr. Shaw handle that one.
Good morning, members of council. Good evening. The Virginia Water and Wastewater Agency Response Network is a mutual aid response system among utility providers in the Commonwealth. And the purpose of the network, or WORN as it's referred to, is to provide a method whereby water and wastewater utility operators, uh, who have sustained some sort of damage to their systems by either man-made or natural disaster, can make a request to all the participating members in the network for assistance. And that could be, um, assistance in the form of either personnel, labor, or materials, uh, or expertise. Uh, and the objective is that you could rapidly deploy short-term emergency service to restore critical operations as quickly as possible. Um, but there is a process that the WORN sets up to be able to make, um, the request, and then that request is broadcast, uh, throughout the Commonwealth. And for some time, the, uh, Department, Virginia Department of Emergency, uh, Management has had a similar system for, uh, public safety operations, and it's worked quite well. The member utilities enter into the agreement, uh, but they still have full discretion as to whether they're able and willing to respond to any particular request. So, um, what we see with the, the VDEM or the Emergency Management, uh, System is that we simply get emails saying that there's a need of a specific type somewhere in the Commonwealth, and, uh, if you're able to respond, you do so. And, um, these are typically during, uh, you know, natural disasters like floods or tornado or something like that. And if you're not able to respond, then there is not an obligation to respond. Um, that's as much as I have, uh, Mr. Mayor, if there's any questions, I'm glad to answer. Otherwise, we've prepared a resolution that would authorize Mr. Hamp to enter into the agreement.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Shaw? Okay. Uh, is there anyone that will push forward this motion for the, to adopt this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Terry. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Is there any discussion? Discussion? Let's vote. Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? This motion. Item number seven. Item number seven is to receive a presentation from the city, of the city's proposed annual action plan relating to the entitlement allocation of supplemental cares allocation for the fiscal year of 2020. Mr. Jude, you've got the floor again.
If I can pull this up. You all got a presentation from us a couple of weeks ago about the Community Development Block Grant Program. So hopefully you're now well aware of it, and we had the public hearing, which we're required to have to solicit input on the use of those funds. This is a little bit of a strange year for the entitlement program because we have some additional money from the CARES Act. I'll just quickly throw up from the last presentation, CDBG's national objectives, which are to benefit low and moderate income persons, to aid in the prevention and elimination of slums and blight, and to meet needs having a particular urgency. They're really targeted at providing some kind of community development funds for neighborhoods that are not seeing reinvestment in the way that newer and higher-income neighborhoods are. Just to recap again, with our, from our 2020 grant, our standard allocation was $194,000. This was supplemented by an additional $114,000 from the CARES Act that was targeted at coronavirus relief and recovery. We used the redevelopment of the Housing Authority to administer these. It's a very meaty grant to administer, and they have one essentially full-time employee that just does this. Of that non-administrative bit, only 30% can go towards downtown projects and commercial areas. The other 70% have to be in neighborhoods, low to moderate income neighborhoods. So for our 2020 grant, what we're proposing to do is to, for the neighborhood portion, focus on the basic city area and work on some pedestrian infrastructure over there that I'll talk about in a minute. With the 30% that we can use for downtown activities, we're going to finish the Market Avenue Parking Lot project. I don't have a picture up here of that, but if you go down to Market Avenue, the parking lot that's right next to the Kroger, you may have noticed that some construction happened there recently, that there were cutouts of tree islands and trees that are going to be planted there and some changes to the lighting and so forth. So hopefully break up that sort of long view of, you know, you just see straight across the parking lot to Kroger. It'll break that up a little bit and provide some shade and beautification. And we've got some stormwater benefits as well from that project. And then with the remainder of the money, specifically the money that we got from the CARES Act, we're proposing to use that for COVID-19-related activities, and I'll talk a little bit about that. This is a table that's in your brief. If you look at your agenda briefing for this, you can see the amounts of money that we're talking about using. Again, we're simply using the full amount for neighborhood projects to focus on the basic city sidewalk project and the pedestrian crossing of Delphine Avenue. We're using the most that we can use out of the downtown money to finish up the Market Avenue Parking Lot. And then we're going to start putting away money towards a stormwater project in the downtown. Now, we may be accumulating or stockpiling money for a couple of CDBG cycles for this project. This is, the cost of this is going to far exceed what CDBG can come up with, and so it may end up on the city CIP at some point. But as many of you are aware, there is a collapsed historic stormwater, storm sewer system that runs directly underneath the downtown buildings and actually causes, some of them, specifically the Leggett Building, to flood from the inside up to the elevator shaft. And that's been a long-time barrier to the redevelopment of that property. It's also a barrier to the redevelopment of other properties, frankly, and to our stormwater system. We received a year or two ago some initial estimates for what that work would cost, and it's a large number. So we're proposing, as we look at downtown, we say, you know, a lot of the beautification stuff that we hope to do, a lot of the things in the Whitsel Plan out of the Broad Street have been done. What is really the next thing that is holding downtown back? And to us, it's really that major corner there at Arch and Main. And the big problem there is, again, this collapsed storm sewer that floods these buildings, and that's a barrier to getting investment in those buildings. And so we'd like to work towards trying to rectify that issue, and that will be a bigger project than $38,000 worth of CDBG money. But CDBG money can help, so we'll start to address that issue. Then we receive the supplemental money from the CARES Act program towards COVID-19-related activities, and we're proposing to put that towards various programs that benefit low income and homeless people who may have suffered from the impact of the virus. And this will be specifically setting up a three-month emergency financial assistance program for households that have unpaid mortgage rent utility expenses, have fallen too far behind on their bills, maybe struggling with rent, small business loans to local businesses that'll be affected by the COVID-19 shutdown, and as well as a grant to homeless organizations like WARM that have been forced to move a lot of people out of their shelters and move folks around in hotel rooms during the crisis. So we're hoping to help out with that situation. The city is not really set up to administer these programs and to evaluate these folks. You know, when you talk about all the questions, you know, there's obviously a lot of questions that occur to people naturally. Well, how do you check on, you know, who should get it? How do you know that they have a plan for getting back on track afterwards? That's stuff that social services is really adept at dealing with. And so what we're going to do is work with the social services folks and run it through them. And they already know how to, also, as an additional benefit, they know how to deal with federal grant money and all of the extra paperwork that it usually entails. So that's the budget that we're proposing. To go quickly back to the basic city project, what we're proposing to do here is construction some sidewalk along Fourth Street. Fourth Street is identified as an important missing piece in our transportation plan in terms of an east-west connection for pedestrians. A lot of folks walk down some quadrangle apartments. You see a lot of them trying to cross Delphine Avenue around the Fourth Street area and kind of from there down south. To me, the safe crossing of Delphine is the real key there. I just talked about Broad Street and what a barrier that is and how that kind of cuts off the northern part of the city for pedestrians. Delphine Avenue does the same thing for the eastern part of Basic City. It sort of slices the Basic City area in half with, again, another, one of those 60-foot blocks of pavement that you have to cross. And so we currently have the city's on-call consultant engineers, McCormick and Taylor, looking into whether we could do a pedestrian refuge to do a safe crossing somewhere along that stretch and provide folks that are trying to get across from the eastern to the western side of Basic City with a safer crossing. So that's how we propose to use the neighborhood project money. Any questions on the CDBG?
No questions from Mr. Jude? There's no action required on this tonight. We're going to have a public hearing and action plan at the August 13 meeting. So we'll move on to item number eight, which is appropriate ordinance for CAPSOL. Consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $800,707 to the Community Action Partnership of Stanton, Augusta, and Waynesboro, commonly referred to as CAPSOL. Mr. Hamp?
Mayor Henderson, members of council, the city serves as the fiscal agent for CAPSOL, which essentially means that we receive their revenues from various sources, account for their expenditures and revenues, and assist them with paying bills and administering limited payroll that they have. Our most recent guidance from our auditors indicates that as we serve as their fiscal agent, we should really be, or the city should be adopting the CAPSOL annual operating budget and incorporating it into the city's operating budget. And that's what this ordinance accomplishes. It doesn't, I don't want, for the listening and watching public, this is not an appropriation of local funds. Your budget ordinance accomplished the city's contribution to the organization from Fiscal 21. This simply incorporates the entirety of the CAPSOL budget into the city's operating budget.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hamp? Hearing no questions, is there a motion to introduce this ordinance?
A move.
Who was that? Terry? Yeah, thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bruce. Are there any discussions on this ordinance? Okay, this, the ordinance will be considered and adopted at our next regular meeting. All right, we come to item number nine, which is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $50,000 to Valley Community Service Board to be used to provide services to homeless individuals to mitigate the efforts of COVID-19 and to promote compliance with public health precautions related to COVID-19. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, sir. The council is likely aware that there are two pots of money or two sources of funds available to the city to furnish relief to the community related to the coronavirus and COVID-19. This appropriation utilizes the CARES Act funds. The city received $1.9 million of those funds and appropriates money to Valley Community Services Board, who is the lead agency in delivering service to the homeless population in the city. And the funds, $50,000, again, these are federal relief funds that flow to the community through the state, will be used in parts for housing support and then other services that mitigate the impacts of COVID-19 among the homeless in our community. And unless there are questions from the council, that's the proposition in a nutshell.
All right, any questions for Mr. Hamp on that? Hearing no questions, can I get a motion to approve the ordinance or introduce the ordinance?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Sam. A second?
Okay.
Thank you, Terry. Is there any discussion on this motion? This ordinance will be considered for final reading and adoption at our next regular business meeting. And then the next order of business, item number 10, is an update on the status of plans of reopening city facilities. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I apologize in advance if this slide presentation is starting to look a little overly familiar, but we've been doing in your most recent meetings, we just want to give the council some updates to plans for reopening, status of the city operation during the pandemic. As we've mentioned before, one of the things that we've had to be alert to and flexible about is simply that, you know, the ever-changing landscape of pandemic response and, you know, the guidance that comes to us from, whether it's the governor's office or Virginia Department of Health, or the things that are constantly coming out of the CDC and OSHA and other organizations. And a phrase that we coined fairly early on was that we have to proceed oftentimes without a lot of durable information. And I think over time, things have become a bit more stable. But as an example, that as recently as Friday, we received initial proposals that come from the Virginia Department of Labor and the Virginia Occupational Safety and Hazard Administration as to workplace standards, that there are standards that OSHA has applied to the workplace during pandemic, and now the Commonwealth is also giving direction. And I think our initial review is that we're in pretty good shape, but we're continuing to evaluate that direction and ensure that we're in compliance and ensuring the safety of our employees. I think it's worth noting, and Dr. Hostetter made note to begin with, that the coronavirus is still active in the community. I think I've got the wrong slide here. If you'll give me just a second, this is from prior meeting. I apologize for that. The currently in the Commonwealth are 71,642 confirmed cases of the COVID-19, and just a bit more than 1,900 deaths have occurred. Currently, as of today, the Virginia Department of Health notes or reports that there are 125 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in the city here in Waynesboro. You can see throughout the Shenandoah, Central Shenandoah Health District, some variety that the communities in Harrisonburg and Rockingham have been particularly hard-hit, and certainly Harrisonburg exceeds CDC's standard for heavily impacted community, that they have more than 1,000 cases per 100,000 population. But even Bath County, who had held out for quite some time, was one of the last communities to report a case, has reported a case since our last meeting. But, you know, for Waynesboro, even at 125, doesn't hit the standard for being inordinately high, but cases certainly have been on the rise. And I put this slide together just to demonstrate that since our last meeting in June 22nd, that the number of cases in Waynesboro have nearly doubled. And so one of the things that, you know, I think is happening in Virginia and has happened in other states, as we open up, then certainly there's greater risk of transmission and exposure. And whereas Virginia tends to be holding its own, there are areas where cases are on the rise. I think there's concern, for instance, in the tidewater area and around the beaches. If you take out the northern Virginia area, there are a couple of other areas in the Commonwealth where cases are in fact rising. So I think we, you know, the message would be that we need to continue to be vigilant and, you know, best practices relative to social distancing and wearing masks and so forth. So as a quick timeline, the, on March 12th, seems like some time ago now, the governor declared a state of emergency in the Commonwealth. By March 23rd, he closed nonessential businesses, K through 12, schools, and banned gatherings of greater than 10 persons by executive order. And then by the end of March 30th, Executive Order 55 implemented a temporary stay-at-home order. By the 15th, the governor began Phase One of easing of certain public health restrictions, referring to that Phase One as a safer-at-home, advising that folks are still safer, especially vulnerable populations. especially vulnerable populations, the elderly, folks with immune deficiency or compromised immune systems, and certain types of health problems are certainly safer at home. And generally speaking, again, social distancing is one of the best means of trying to avoid transmission of the COVID virus. By June 5th, the Phase Two, our continued phasing of easing of restrictions was implemented. And then on July 1st, Phase Three of easing of restrictions was implemented. And Phase Three looks something like this, that still safer at home, especially for vulnerable populations. But most essential and nonessential businesses are able to open with various types of safety restrictions. And the governor's guidance provides, by executive order provides, guidance for all businesses and then provides guidances that are guidance that is sector-specific. So there's guidance for retail operations, for restaurants, for gyms, and for personal care, hairdressers, nail salons, and so forth. So there's a great deal of best management practice or best health practices that are being promoted at the Commonwealth level. Continued social distancing is advised, continued teleworking is encouraged, face coverings are recommended in indoor public settings. And then it is that no gathering of, or a gathering of more than 250 people is prohibited. I think it's important to note that the governor's guidance is based on several things. One is, you know, that the downward trend in the number of positive cases. Two would be a downward trend in the number of hospitalizations, an increase in testing and tracing of virus if it's detected. And then as well, an assessment of hospital and ICU, especially capacity, and assessment that there's a sustainable supply of personal protective equipment. So one of the things that, and it may be a bit of a sardonic observation, is that while the part of it is that cases still can be transmitted and that there still is infection in communities throughout the Commonwealth, including Waynesboro. But the good news is that if you do get seriously ill, there's currently hospital capacity. So as we look at the governor's guidance, then we begin to implement our own standards for workplace hygiene and disinfection, hand washing, and various engineered methods of creating social distance, you know, providing PPE to staff, those kinds of things. We have a travel policy in place. We've implemented various types of training programs. And then we will continue to monitor both our own workforce and to, as well as the number of cases that occur in the community. And we continue to monitor whatever the latest guidance from the Virginia Department of Health. As I've noted before, that the types of things that we're implementing, one is that we continue to promote teleworking among those employees where it's appropriate. And there are a number of services now that are provided, internal services or services to the public generally that are provided either online or by email and telephone, those kinds of things. We will promote workforce separation of at least six feet. We certainly ban handshaking and those kinds of things. We do a health screening for any employee who's coming into the workplace. Either we do temperature tests or we have an application on smartphones and smart devices to do a health screen of employees before they report to work. We look at the various work sites and try to determine whether traffic can be controlled and installed separation and barriers where it's currently installing touchless faucets and fixtures throughout public restrooms, and we'll install those in some of the park facilities. Some of those fixtures are already in place and more are coming. We've implemented and will continue to implement visitor restrictions and restriction of use of our buildings. We, you know, communicate and train employees. We have standards for disinfection. We have a liberal leave policy and schedules that are established to try to keep the workforce separated. And then we provide gloves and face coverings and hand sanitizers and disinfectant to all of our employees. In terms of the current schedule of reopening, the Waynesboro Public Library currently is offering curbside service. And we're looking towards a partial reopening in August. I think the library will look a little different to patrons. That areas where there's seating for people to linger have been removed. In the area where there are public computers, every other computer's been removed so we can maintain social distance. The, in the Parks and Recreation Area, the shelters, shelter rentals and youth league sports have resumed. Public restrooms are open. We're currently evaluating the fall programming. I think we have some thought that the Rosenwald Center would reopen in early August as well. We'll take a phased approach to the reopening of various municipal buildings. That's the Yancey Building, the Gorsuch Building, Economic Development Building. And a lot of that will be, again, a phased approach where certain areas would be open to the public for citizens to access folks. We would still encourage, however, that folks, to the extent possible, do your business with the city by email or by telephone or online generally, or through drop windows and things like that. A lot of offices would be open by appointment only. And then I think the earliest that we would propose to have a live council meeting would be August the 10th. That would conclude my comments this evening, Mr. Mayor, unless there are any questions or comments from the council.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Shaw? Thank you, sir. That was a good update. I appreciate it. Next is Mr. Hamp for your communications correspondence and calendar.
Yes, sir. I have one item this evening. It's known that at least one member of council was traveling and out of town for the scheduled July 27th meeting. We look at our work tonight and what's coming and don't see items that require attention at that second meeting and wonder that the council would be interested in canceling the July, I'm sorry, I said 22nd, July 27th regular business meeting.
Need to take a vote on this?
If it's council's desire to counsel that, cancel that meeting, then yes, please do that by simple motion and vote. If it's a suggestion that the council takes, wishes to take a pass on, no action necessary.
Okay. Do we have a motion to cancel our July 27th meeting with no business?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Bruce. Any, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. All in favor, say aye.
Do we have a comment or question?
Oh, yeah, okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I don't know how quickly, you know, we could, or what timeframe we could cancel the meeting in. Yeah, as we just heard from Mr. Shaw, it has been a very fluid few months. And so, you know, I hate to, you know, sort of take us out of the possibility of getting together to react to something else that has changed in the next few weeks here. Again, I don't know if it's something we can leave a little bit undecided this evening or if it's such that with announcements of meetings, it has to be done this evening if we choose to cancel.
Ms. Michelson, if you would like to respond. I see you shaking your head, but let's hear from you, please.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Dr. Hostetter, members of the council, you know, if you cancel the July 27th meeting at any time, you, council can call a special meeting, which would require only three days' notice, or an emergency meeting, say if something came up further of the governance, governor's orders or something else came into effect that the council wanted to have an emergency meeting, that notice would just need to be reasonable under the circumstances. So I think council still has plenty of flexibility and opportunity to provide and hold either a special meeting or an emergency meeting, even if the regular meeting is at a different date, if the regular meeting is canceled.
Thank you. Is that a good answer, Sam?
Well, I think it provides an out. I guess I'm still not sure that I will support it, but that's okay. If the majority would go ahead and cancel it at this point, then so be it.
Okay. Well, I think Sam brings up an interesting point, too. I mean, in the past, at least in my four years, I can't think of an instance, not to say that we haven't, I can't think of an instance where we've had to do a formal vote two weeks prior to a meeting. I think we typically just done informally, right? I mean, if you get to about a week out and there's not business to be had, that we've made that decision just a few days out prior to the meeting. It just seems like, it does seem like the exception to what we've normally done.
So I think in recent years, it's much like the case of Capsol. We've been serving as their fiscal agent for as long as they've been existence. We recently received guidance that there's a better way, a more proper way to pursue things. And I think this is the case, that guidance and advice that I recall getting from Ms. Michelson, that if you know there's an opportunity or a likelihood that you won't meet, the preferred way to do it is to take formal action and communicate that to the public. You both raise perfectly valid observations, and I think, you know, Ms. Michelson can confirm. We can go back to tradition and simply announce to the public as the 27th approach is, if there's not a need to meet, that we won't meet. Do we have that flexibility to do it that way, Ms. Michelson?
Yes, Mr. Hamp. I think you've described the situation aptly, that I think it's best practice to provide, one, have a motion and discussion regarding an anticipated cancellation of a meeting if information is known at the prior meeting. And it just serves to give the public ample opportunity to know what, that that can't, that meeting has been canceled and what other meetings are going to be going forward. But council still has the opportunity at any time before the 27th to cancel a meeting if it's unnecessary.
I would just offer, you know, Mr. Mayor, for council's consideration, the optics of, you know, we have had in recent memory some moments where we did proactively cancel a meeting well in advance, a week or so in advance. Events occurred in our community where the public wanted to come speak to council, and the optics of it appeared that the two were related, even though they weren't. And again, with, you know, one out of five members, it just, I would sort of suggest we just leave it on the books and maybe cancel it, you know, the week prior to just to make sure that there's no, or just offer that up as an idea.
Did you second the motion? Are you withdrawing your motion?
I'll withdraw. Well, I seconded the motion. And, but yeah, I think I would probably, if I can rescind my second.
If you're not going to support the motion, then you should withdraw your second because the second infers that you are in support of the motion.
Yeah, okay. Well, I appreciated the discussion, so I'll rescind my second.
Okay. Mr. Allen, your motion still stands?
I can withdraw it or it can die with a lack of a second. Either one is good with me.
Ms. Michael, can you withdraw that motion also?
It just dies if no one, if there is no second, then it just dies and no discussion necessary.
All right. Do we have a second for the motion? Here in a second, then we'll play it by ear as we get closer to the date.
Thanks, guys. That was a great discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we come to item number 12, which is our citizen comment period. And I'll repeat the instructions that we gave at the beginning of the meeting. There's a toll-free number you call, 1-844-844-9200. When prompted, the access code for the meeting is going to be 398145, followed by the pound sign. You will hear a prompt that says question and answer session. To start, press the pound, I mean, withdraw it, press the star six key, press the star six key. You will hear, if you would like to speak, press one. At that time, you'll press one. While you're waiting, you'll hear the audio feed of the meeting. Wait until you're prompted by the moderator, then you can come on and share your comments with council. Participants are reminded that though the, through the pre-recorded prompts referred to questions, the public hearing and citizen comment period are for a meeting, and your time to simply express your comments to council. Council will not reply to your comments at this time. Are there any calls waiting?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I believe we do have a caller on the line.
Okay.
And I believe.
Hello? My name is Tom Manville. My name is Tom Manville. I live at 145 Huntington Place here in Waynesboro, Virginia. Mayor Henderson and Vice Mayor Williams and councilman, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to hear me tonight. I come here tonight as a co-president of the Waynesboro Players. The Waynesboro Players is a nonprofit organization that has worked here in Waynesboro for over 50 years to deliver an all-volunteer theater experience for both actors and audiences alike. We work in the local community not only to give actors and audiences a community theater experience, but also to support non-Waynesboro Player productions at local schools, such as Waynesboro High School and KCMS. We also provide an annual college scholarship to local students to help them expand their, I'm sorry, the expense of furthering their education in the arts. The Waynesboro Players has a physical address here in Waynesboro. In addition, it's down at the intersections of 340 and East Main Street as you leave town. Known lovingly as the warehouse, we, at the warehouse, we are proud to house an extensive collection of costumes. And here we have sets and set workshops and a practice space. From here, we support many schools and local shows with costumes, props, lighting and audio equipment, as well as set construction resources. In addition, the warehouse space has been used to deliver acting camps and workshops. We work in the local community not only, I'm sorry, to do all this, we have relied on a simple business model that revolves around donations and a three-show season. Sell tickets, gather donations, and if the ticket sales and the donations exceed the fixed costs of running the warehouse and supporting the scholarships and the variable costs of running the shows, then we are good. This year, however, COVID-19 stopped our season cold right after the show number two, The Outsider. A show that we are thankful to share with council, and we were able to have you as our guests at our dress rehearsal. COVID-19 has had a massive impact on local economy, and large gatherings have been shut down outright for understandable reasons. But that has devastated the season and will probably have a significant impact on the next season as well. In addition to the loss of ticket sales, donations from local supporters have been stressed in this time of universal need. While we are working hard to find a path to deliver our promise of scholarships and acting opportunities to our audiences and actors, monetizing this path has been difficult. And as any businessman can tell you, fixed costs must be paid. We have cut our expenses to the bone, but this year, our finances will be blood red. This all being said, I come here tonight as a leader of a small, all-volunteer nonprofit in Waynesboro. Governments have worked hard to support the local. Governments have worked hard to support the local businesses with payroll protection. Community groups have worked hard to support those who have lost their jobs and childcare, with childcare. The community has come together to make it through this crisis. I come here tonight to ask if there is any additional resources available through the COVID Cares Act that the council consider setting a small portion of it aside for specifically for small not-all volunteer nonprofits like the Waynesboro Players. Organizations like ours need just a little help to, to, to ensure that the lights stay on through this dark time. We can stretch a dollar a country mile, but for us to support Waynesboro for another 50 years, we need help to make this through this crisis. Again, I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for your comment. Are there any others waiting in line, Mike?
No, sir. That was the, the one comment for the evening.
Okay. All right. That being the end of this council's business tonight, do we have a motion to close the meeting?
So, so moved.
All right, Terry. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I think Bruce is mouthing it.
Yes, I, I can see saying.
I said it too. I was still muted. Second.
Okay, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are closed. Thank you.
Hey, great job, Bobby.
For Mr. Mayor and Ms. Vice Mayor.
Yep. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Night.